Okay, I think we're gonna get started. Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Newfane Planning Commission's meeting and public hearing on the flood hazard bylaw, which is an amendment, well, is a proposed amendment to Newfane zoning bylaw. I will, we have court here among the planning commissions, we'll call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. And then we will go right into the public hearing and call the public hearing to order now, also 6 o'clock. We are, I hope those of you who wanted to see have had a chance to look at the draft proposed bylaw. We have had the incredible help of the Wyndham Regional Commission. We have joining us tonight Alyssa Sabato from the Wyndham Regional Commission and John Berger Campbell from the Vermont DEC. Thank you both for being here. I also want to just highlight, we have Ken Esti here, the former chair of the Planning Commission, who took the laboring oar on making this happen on the Planning Commission side. Thank you, Ken. I'll give a very brief overview, which is that the proposed bylaw is... It's called a bylaw, but it will really be an amendment to the existing zoning bylaw, and it would replace Article 6, which deals with the floodplain and the regulations that apply to the floodplain, the specially-defined floodplain. I'm gonna ask anybody on the Planning Commission, and Alyssa or John, to step in at any time, if you have something to add or correct. This will, the proposed bylaw reflects the, basically, the changed floodplain in Newfane. And it is pretty much, it's inevitable that we're gonna have to adapt to incorporate that into our bylaw. By doing this now, there are big federal and state incentives. So if Newfane gets this done now, we have, we're eligible for more FEMA money if and when the inevitable happens and we have storm damage again. And there is an added state incentive to do that as well, to do that now. I will hand off to Alyssa to introduce the substance of the changes in the new bylaw. And Ken, please feel free to add anything as well. I know if we have questions for John, we are going to ask that folks, especially online, try and do a hand raise to ask questions, rather than just jumping in. And hopefully that will work and we will acknowledge everyone. Anything to add, Jan or Mar? Thanks, Alyssa, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for having me. And it's been a pleasure to work with the Planning Commission on this update. And, you know, the process began quite some time ago, as you may recall. And we're happy to have the Select Board's support in doing this bylaw amendment. And it's been an interesting road, and we are happy to have it finally drafted and ready for consideration for action. I can walk through it with you in an overview. Back before that, I wanted to give, just, you know, say a few words, and then I'll offer some time to John Berger Campbell. I'm hoping that he is the John online, and to see if he has some additional words, and then I can, and I can get into the bylaw substance a bit more. But this was brought forward to the Wyndham Regional Commission as a desire of Newfane. We had funding to support it, and so it was a great match. And I think the desire came out of a recognition that flooding hazards are a significant vulnerability in Newfane and are predicted to, you know, get worse over the years, as we've all heard from numerous sources. And so what this bylaw does is to consider future development and to try to ensure that it is considered from a hazard standpoint related to flooding in a way that is reflective of the most current standards and recommendations coming from the federal and state level. And trying to create a bylaw that is going to lead to the safest development going forward in your community. This bylaw does incorporate river corridors, which are mapped by the Agency of Natural Resources. And so that would be the most significant change of this bylaw compared to your current bylaw, which regulates only the special flood hazard area, which is the FEMA-defined area. So I can show you the mapping in a little bit, but that's the, that's the most significant difference. And so, you know, it's basically, you're putting in place something that is going to ensure that future development is as safe as possible as far as what current regulations would advise. So, yeah, and hopefully John can explain a little bit more detail. But as Kate said, there is going to be a requirement for this bylaw to be updated anyway. So there is new FEMA floodplain mapping coming soon. And, you know, within the next couple of years to Wyndham County and to the entire state. They're doing it county by county. And Wyndham County's fairly down the list, but it's going to happen in the next couple of years. So with that new mapping is a requirement that all towns that want to maintain membership in the National Flood Insurance Program, which you currently are, must adopt bylaws to meet current standards, which would mean that your current bylaw would need to be amended anyway to come up to current standards, even at FEMA minimum levels, which this bylaw that we're looking at now exceeds FEMA minimums. But it would need to be updated regardless with those new mapping coming into place. So you're kind of jumping, you know, doing this in advance of what's inevitably required, which will give you a, an advanced bonus to your emergency relief assistance fund, which Kate mentioned is an increased state match following any federal declaration. So FEMA gives 75%, and currently, the town of Newfane gets a 12.5% match from the state. In addition to that, what this will do with the river corridor being in place, it will give you a 17.5% match from the state above that 75. So it gives you a 5% increase over your current level, which adds up quickly. It means a lot whenever you're dealing with large events and a large amount of damage costs following significant events. So there's that state incentive that becomes applicable as soon as this is in place. And that would, you know, affect, be effective for any federal declaration going forward. So that's a bit about, like, some of the financial incentive and the reasoning behind why this process was started. And you're fine. So John Berger Campbell, did you want to add anything?
Sure. So hello, everybody. This is John Berger Campbell. I'm the floodplain manager for Data and Natural Resources. I apologize, I don't make video on my phone. It's been a, it's been a crazy couple of weeks in our lives here, but I'm here. So, so again, Alyssa touched on the big reasons, what's going on. So, you know, you're moving from only regulating the flood hazard areas, regulating the flood hazard area with the corridors. So there's an increase in geographic region that's being regulated. And we could get to that a little bit more if there's questions. And just one point of clarity from Alyssa's talk on E-RAP. Having a river corridor floodplain bylaw does not necessarily guarantee you 17.5%. There are other minimum standards that have to be met, having, you know, the most current road and bridge standards, for example, having a hazard situation play on. But this is a big step forward for the town, so it's great. And, yeah, I'm excited for the conversation if there's, if there's questions.
So Kate, do you want me to walk through the bylaw? And I, I can only see you all, so I'm just kind of curious as to the size of the audience there. Hello, hello.
You have a nice turnout.
Great. So is there interest in, you know, in an overview of the document? Or would you like to go more into just the map? Have the map up and ask questions? It's up to you.
My question is, the most recent map I was able to find is from 2007. Is that correct?
It is still the most current map from what it came in. That, that map is what's being updated.
Okay, because I believe we lie on a spot that is going to a better direction. So I believe we'd lessen the floodplain, so that's where my concern lies.
Yeah, yeah, whatever the new maps are, there's a time period during which FEMA is looking for comments on new mapping that's proposed. It's in like a draft form. So any changes that you would suggest to them? There is a time of the process where it's pretty easy to make the suggestions.
Okay.
And then after they become final, you know, you have, it's more of like, you know, the letter of map revision kind of route, which is, is more difficult. But with the new maps coming, yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt you guys, thank you. That's a great question. Should we just revert back to doing like a quick overview and then come back to questions in the maps?
If you want to do the whole review, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, I'm sorry. But you have time to go through.
Hey Alyssa, how about like a, just a brief overview to orient folks? And then we can go to questions in the maps, if you don't mind, just a...
Sure, yeah.
Should we change the view so she can share her screen?
Yeah, yeah, I can share my screen.
For those of you who are online, on the notice on the Newfane website, you can also see the document, the proposed document to click through. We have at least one extra copy here, if you guys want to...
This is, I have it on my phone, I'm just gonna move it.
Okay, can you all see the document now?
Yes.
Is this, is this large enough? Is this a large enough view, or do you want me to zoom in?
I think that's good. We have a bunch of paper copies here, and I think folks online can also pull it up.
Okay.
Alyssa, can I just interrupt real quick?
Yeah.
I am double booked, so can we jump to the river corridor section? Because that might be the most, there might be the most questions from there. So, and then I can, we can talk about those around, if there's questions specifically about river corridors.
Okay, yes, yes. So John, I am on that. So this is, if you're looking at paper copy, it's pages 23, 24, and the beginning of 25. So is anyone that specific questions, you might go ahead and ask them. Will we have John on the line?
I have a specific question. Mine would be in regards to the variance here, and that's 27 exactly. So how would I go about asking for a variance?
I can, I can answer other questions on the bylaw after we have a chance to specific to river corridors. Just gonna do it that way.
Okay.
Off the bat, I can't see online with the screen share if we have other hands online with river corridor questions.
Nobody has a hand raised, but you can, you'll see it here.
John, do you, do you want to give us a little overview of the river corridor change in particular? Thank you.
Sure. So, so Newfane has for many years, and I've worked with Merle, you know, for a long time, in regulating the special flood hazard area. So this new bylaw incorporates the A and R map river corridor. So the FEMA maps are often focused on how deep the water is going to be, right? Like, here, we're gonna call this the 1% chance annual flood or the 100-year flood. The water's going to be X feet deep at your property, let's say. The river corridor is really looking at how deep the water's going to be, but about where physically on the landscape the stream is going to be. We know that streams are static features. They move side to side across the landscape. You can see it in Newfane. You don't have to look too far to see kind of the bank erosion that happens every time there's a heavy rain event. So this river corridor is, is looking at where that water is going to be and really limiting new investment in those areas. So it's, yes, it's an increase in, in regulated hazard area, but it's really, you can't, you can't build your way out of the river corridor, I guess is the short answer.
So the river corridor on the mapping here is the cream color, this kind of light area that follows many of the streams here. So on some of the smaller streams, it's simply a 50-foot setback. And then on the larger streams, it's mapped. So it's, it varies in those, with those larger streams based on the A and R analysis.
Yeah, and I think your map that you have of novelists is great, because it really, if you think about it like layers of a cake, you have the regulatory floodway, you have the flood fringe, and then you stack the river corridor on top of it. And that becomes the regulated flood hazard area for the town.
Yep. So the area in red and orange is the special flood hazard area. And then this additional area outside is the river corridor. So let me see, I can toggle the river corridor off, and you can see the difference there. And, yeah, you guys don't have floodway in Newfane, but, but, yeah, there's, there's I E zone where there's base flood elevations determined, that's the red area. And then A zone where there aren't any base flood elevations determined, and that's the orange area.
Alyssa, did, as a part of this, did you guys do any analysis to say how many new structures the river corridor captures? Do you have any, any sense?
I have that data. That would be part of the hazard mitigation plan. But I don't have it offhand, because I didn't draft the plan. So I can't tell you that offhand, that's, apologies on that.
No, it's just one of those questions that, that gets asked kind of regularly. But so are there questions from the board or from the audience about river corridors?
No, it's routine.
Well, mine was relative to the variance of it, because I can recite the exact one, but our unique situation is the geographical location of where our lot is.
So, so I can, I'll touch on that a little bit. I don't want to get into variances, because that's a, as Alyssa can tell you in more detail, a word that we don't like to use very often. But, but when it comes to the river corridor, if you believe that your structure or parcel is in the river corridor and it's incorrectly mapped in the river corridor, unlike FEMA where you have to hire a surveyor engineer to go through a formal letter of map amendment process, with the river corridor, you contact Merle, or you can contact me directly. And myself and one of the DEC river scientists will come down and we'll do a site visit. We'll say, you know, maybe there's evidence of bedrock that we just simply missed during the mapping. Maybe you know of some unique geologic feature that, that should be accounted for. And we can, we can amend the map, if you will. It might not show up on the atlas right away, but we can amend the map to say, yes, this parcel is, or this structure is incorrectly in. Or we might come and say, no, you know, for X, Y, or Z reasons, this is why it's within the river corridor and is going to stay within the river corridor.
Okay.
So, yeah, if there's anything specific you want to look at on the maps, we can do that. Go ahead, Debbie.
Yeah, hi. If you could go up a little farther north, my property is where Radway Hill Road comes down to the river and goes over into Brookline. I saw it briefly there, but it looks like I am in the river corridor up there.
Yeah. You're right here, right?
I'm down right at the river. I'm that last 83, right down there. So I'm, so right at the very top there. Ooh, you went too far.
Yep, sorry.
Right there, 83.
I'm here, I'm here.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So it looks like that big broad red area now does include...
Well, it looks like the floodplain is, is across the street. The river corridor does extend onto your parcel a little bit.
Okay. So I guess I would definitely want to have Merle or somebody come take a look.
But that's actually, this is a really good example. So you don't have to have somebody come take a look unless you were planning on necessarily building something, right? Again, so it's, being in, there's no, I want to be explicitly clear, there are no insurance implications being in the river corridor. Not now, not in the future. That's... But your property, this is a good example, where you can see the road is at Upper River Road. You're on the upstream side, if you will, of Upper River Road. So we would likely modify the river corridor to be, to Upper River Road, because that is an investment that the town has made there to say, we're gonna keep this, this road in place. So we might modify that, that river corridor in this instance.
Okay, all right. All right, so there's nothing I need to do unless I'm trying to build another structure on my property?
That is correct. That is correct. Yeah, yeah, that's a, I'm glad it kind of came up accidentally. There are zero insurance implications being in the river corridor.
Here's another question. The house across the, at 7th Grassy Brook Road, that might cross the river from me, that property is on the market, and it's all very, very, very red. So that's in a current floodplain, correct?
That is correct.
So whoever buys that house is going to have to get flood insurance?
If they have a mortgage.
If they get a federally backed mortgage, correct.
Oh, okay, all right.
And that's in Brookline, right? So that, this...
That's true.
So this is, this is just the Newfane side of the river for now. Kate?
Yes, okay, yeah, great.
So the question is, let's take any property that's fully in the red. I mean, that's, that's not something we're necessarily up to right now, because it would be in the red, the current mapping and probably the future mapping would, it would still be in the red. That's not what we're really changing here. It's more about river corridors.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. And in fact, any of the FEMA data, from what we've seen through the draft maps and other parts of the state, the FEMA data is getting better. So it's getting further refined. So that red area might actually be a little smaller, you know, in certain places when, when the new draft map, new draft map comes out.
Yeah, my question was, it doesn't just mainly regard new structures from what I see here, because it also involves, you know, RV parking and open fencing and, you know, stuff as that, stuff in Phil, which I don't see how that correlates to just new structures.
That's true. I mean, it addresses storage in the floodplain and that kind of thing. But RV parking, for example, is, is currently addressed in your floodplain bylaw and has been a FEMA requirement in the past. So that's not something new.
We've held flood insurance for decades, though, that's the thing. We had no claims, nothing like that. That's why I think it's a significant spot. So that's where, like you said, we have time later for the variance and whatever. But, yeah, I just don't see, I see a lot of other things being accompanied on here, not just new structures, which I'm fully for, you know, environmental regulations. I'm all for it, but I...
Yeah, there's a, there's a table in the bylaw that kind of has, you know, everything that's, that's addressed for the most part. So maybe that could be helpful for you to understand what's considered.
Page 17. I just want to take a second, if you don't have hands up, to acknowledge Merle Tessay, who's here with us and is our zoning administrator and is the person who will know this best and administer it. And Merle, I think in our conversations, it's fair to say that, that you, the concerns you had before were sort of technical and those have been addressed. Are there, are there other things that you want to comment on, on this?
Would you repeat?
I was just saying that, that you have reviewed this and you've worked with Alyssa on it. You and I spoke briefly, and I was just offering you the chance to, to add any comments or thoughts on this, since you, you've been through it. And I think you, as I understand it, with the changes you made, you've given it your blessing.
I've been listening to this, and I've got a question for John. And basically, these maps, updated maps, won't be coming out for a couple of years.
That is correct, Merle.
And we are going to be redoing the bylaws, sorry, the flood hazards, really soon. Now, if I issue permits now based on the current maps, and then we get some in the future that are quite different.
Yeah.
Where does that leave me?
You're, the maps that you have now, Merle, are the regulatory maps, and so the town adopts new maps. So, so you are, you're doing everything correctly.
Yeah. I just don't want to issue a permit and then somebody gets nailed for it in the future.
Nope, no, I, it's a, it's a valid question, but right now, you're, you're all, you're in good shape.
Okay.
Yeah, and this bylaw will auto-adopt the new maps once they become effective.
Debbie, I see your hand there again.
Oh, you're muted.
On mute, yeah. If we won't have access to these maps anytime soon, could you, could you kindly zoom into my property again and let me take a screenshot?
Yeah, sure. These maps, let me, let me tell you, these maps, this is, these are available for public viewing anytime on the, on the, this is the floodready atlas, so it's a little bit simpler. But what's the maps@hermont.gov? But John, do you know that the, the quick way to save the address to get to the floodready?
It's floodready.vt.gov, I believe. May I ask any questions? I wasn't ready for that one. But I want to be, so just to back up, just point of clarification. The only maps that are going to be changing are the FEMA flood hazard area maps. But that will be 2025 is a, like a reasonable timeframe. So nothing's going to be changing immediately. It's a, it's an every 15 to 20-year process, so it takes a long time. So, but, yeah, I just want to be clear. The only maps that are changing are the flood hazard area maps in two or three years.
So, I'm sorry, all these laws will go into effect in all, in two or three years when the new maps are updated, or is that...
Well, the, so the regulation will become effective now under the current maps. And then when the new maps are approved by FEMA, and then this bylaw would regulate the new maps. So it will be the same, you know, it will be the same bylaw. It would meet the standards set. So you wouldn't have to do a bylaw update at that time, and your bylaw would adopt the new maps. So it'll just be, I know, until that point, these maps are effective. And once that point happens, then the new maps are effective, the FEMA maps, the river corridor stays what it is. But the new FEMA maps will become effective after that point, and the same bylaw will be in place for the area that's now mapped.
Thanks. Do we have Select Board members, particular question from Deff or Ann or Angela? Thanks for being here, by the way.
No, I don't have any specific questions.
I don't have any questions at this time.
I'm all good, thank you.
Thanks. Alyssa, are there other things you want to touch on here?
Um, well, I can, you know, do a high-level overview of the bylaw if you'd like me to, still.
Is there, sorry, Alyssa, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Is there anything, are there any questions that I can answer before I jump off?
Specific river corridor questions, right? Is it, can we cover all that?
Yeah, Ken has a question.
John, what, your experiences with other towns, what advantages have they found adopting this type of bylaw?
Your reception's bad, John.
I, I, I lost you, can you repeat the question, sorry?
Sure, um, advantages, uh, what advantages have towns, um, found by adopting the river corridor bylaw?
Sure, so there's kinda two advantages, right, there's a, there's a financial advantage, which I think Alyssa's already touched on, and you know, when it comes to, uh, reimbursement from disaster events, which I, I, I think NuFain is all too familiar with. Um, and there's a, there's a, there's an ecosystem.
Hey, John, where's the camera again?
John, we can't hear you.
Hey, John, we still can't hear you, um.
Purely driven by the financial incentive under ERAS.
Hey, John.
Um, and, and you get, you, you do get a bump in, in state.
Hey, John, excuse me, sorry I interrupted you, can you go back, we lost you for a little bit, so we didn't hear the first part of your answer.
The ecosystem.
Yeah, sorry, I just noticed, I got a little, so I don't, uh, uh, so there's a, there's an ecosystem benefit to it, so there is, there is, um, you know, less riprapping on stream banks, less hard armoring of, to protect uh, new investments that might crop up in the river corridor. Um, there's also a, there's, in addition to the ERAS benefit, there are, there are kind of bonus points, if you will, when it comes to state grant programs for having a river corridor bylaw, so if you apply for a flood resilience community fund grant, or a hazard mitigation grant, you do get kind of bonus scoring points if you have river corridors, or if you're limiting new encroachments. So it's kinda, it, there's a, there's a twofold reason to do it.
Thanks. Do we have other questions about the?
Yeah, I find that, you know, of all the work we've done, that was one thing that didn't really come up, you know, is that I think what you were saying, John, is something about the reinforcing of river, river corridors, you know, to protect new investments that, you know, which sort of channels the water even more vigorously in, in the, in an extreme event, that just exacerbates the issue, is the kinds of things that we try to do to prevent damage to property, is that what you were saying?
Yes, yes, exac- exactly, the more, the more we put in the river corridor, the more people are gonna become invested in that, in that property, and they're gonna wanna hard armor their bank when it, and, and, and when it floods, because it will flood, and the river will move, it might happen next year, it might happen in fifteen years, but it, it will happen, you know, but these are the things that we know.
Well, the other, the other part that's alarming about this too, and this is something Alyssa and I have talked about, is the, is the downstream effects, so you have things, you know, structures and river corridors that, you know, if they get hit and swept away, then someone down the river is going to be in the path of that destruction. So not only, go ahead, John.
No, you're, 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 you're spot on, I, 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 I probably couldn't and wouldn't say it better myself.
So that, that's alarming to me, you know, to, to be thinking about like what's coming at you, not just water, but other structures, frankly. And so, you know, that's, for me anyway, speaking just from the point of view of my own interest in this issue, is that this is something we really want, you know, so it's a land stewardship issue, or the community stewardship matter, not to mention the financial advantage, which I understand, back of the envelope calculations, it was something on the order of perhaps three hundred thousand dollars more would have come our way. You know, well, let's put it this way, if, forbid the thought, but if there were a similar Irene situation, that would be another three hundred thousand, if not more, that would be coming towards NuFain, so.
Yeah, I think John had to jump on, just letting you know.
Yeah, John.
But yeah, yeah, you're right, Ken, you know.
Thank you, John.
Does that, does that involve private roads as well, cause as far as I'm compared, we can go back, we've received zero state funds on our private roads, so so would that also include private roads?
The ERAS, what you're saying?
Yes.
The, that, it, that relates to public damages.
Okay.
So it, it, not, not private damages.
So we're being penalized at with no advantage, essentially?
Well, there, there's, the, the private damages, there's no change to that, how, how that would be considered, it's, um, this bylaw doesn't affect that at all.
We, um, I, I think as, the, the collective questions are like public roads and our spaces, you know, and our obligations as taxpayers, probably rather than property by property when we think about the, like, the FEMA and the state funds for rebuilding.
That's true. So, yeah, how, do you want me to go through the bylaw now, please?
Okay.
Does anyone want an overview? Does anyone want, anyone here on Zoom want a complete overview from Alyssa of the bylaw? Anyone? Okay, select board members? Commissioners?
We, we've been discussing, the planning commission has been reviewing this and discussing this and giving input, so this isn't the first time we've seen it, it's been, um, pretty carefully considered, and Alyssa has worked with us and with Ken, um, in particular to make sure it's the best version it can be, so you all should know that, that this isn't like a, a first draft at all, it's a product of a lot of work. Um, so, that's why we're, like, there's not a lot of questions from our end, is because we have been working on this for months and months. Um, I would say that, Alyssa, if you want to add things, that's great, but I don't think you're obligated to walk through it, I think we have a mostly kind of if not expert, um, well-informed crowd here tonight, but I would encourage everyone to take advantage of Alyssa being here and her knowledge and generosity with her time to ask other questions, um, about any part of this or, um, its impact.
Sure, I, I will just add that, um, with any, um, zoning bylaw update, uh, on a, on a larger scale, that this would be able to be rolled into that to, um, be kind of incorporated as the new article that, um, Article Six, as it is now, um, you know, we can easily alter the numbering structure to align with that new bylaw, so that it can all be in one when the next update occurs.
Thank you, yeah, that will be work in itself, and, um, but that's an important thing to add. Any other questions from anyone on any part of this? Um, I will use my part, I'm here to thank you again, um, Alyssa, thank you, Ken, thank you, Merle, and everyone who's put time into working on this so far, the next step is that we will now, um, vote based on this meeting and the public input we have had and have not had, on whether to pass it up to the select board, and then the next step will be for the select board to consider this and hold its own public hearing, and then we will hopefully be working towards, uh, a formal bylaw amendment, um, which is the point at which we would, this would be numbered to conform to the bylaw, and all the little details in, in our zoning bylaw that need to be adjusted to make this part of it would, would be made, um, and there will be public notice and review periods again. Um, with that, I will say, do we have, um, motion to?
Uh, we close the hearing first.
Oh, we close the hearing before you, okay, then, uh, we will, is that a motion or just a closing?
I think we just close the hearing.
Okay, so, so then I just, I will, we'll adjourn the public hearing party this, um, at six thirty-nine, and we are back to our planning commission meeting? Uh, do we, do we open that?
Um, no. My question, my question is, do we vote, uh, to pass it along today, or do we wait, um, till the next meeting to do it?
Um, is it, does, do any of you wanna wait or add anything to this?
Oh, I think we should.
I think Max will be open to this, moving along, so.
So then we will, do we?
I, I, I move that we uh, recommend to the select board the consideration of the new flood and fluvial erosion hazard regulations, um, at their next possible convenience. Somebody has a second.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm just making sure we have the magic language to, to pass it along. Um. Is that the?
We just need to submit this proposed bylaw and then to the
Okay.
Select board.
Great, so I'm happy to second that. Uh, all in favor?
Discussion.
Uh, discussion? Yes.
A point of information, your agenda does not mention that you will be voting on that. So anybody that was coming specifically for a vote would not have been warned of that.
That is a fair point, and that's something we have discussed, um.
Okay. With that point, maybe we should just wait till next meeting.
Yeah, so I, I think that maybe we should.
Yeah, we can wait till next.
We will, um, I, I think, we will
Table?
Table this, but we, we just thought that we are gonna table the issue and ha- vote again at our next planning commission meeting. Does that, does?
Yeah.
That address you concerned about?
I'm just giving part of attorney advice.
No, no, we appreciate it, this is, this has been a, 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 a.
That was my thought, but I thought maybe you could squeeze it back, but I think your, your vote will wait till next meeting, sure.
I think there's no reason not to, if there's any concern about it.
And that way it'll be on the agenda, yeah.
Thank you.
So then, I think we, do we have any other, um?
I move you adjourned.
Second that.
All in favor? Okay, folks, we're adjourned, thank you all, and thank you again, especially, um, Alyssa, we really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.